The meeting has been called to order. We have a majority of each of the council and the Audit and Finance Committee. I welcome everybody to the first meeting in our new council chambers. I can now hear a reverberation from my microphone, so I'm assuming that means that those of you online can hear when you couldn't hear before. We're testing this technology for the first time, so please bear with us with any challenges that we have in getting it right.
I have to lower the volume with our mics a little bit.
And just to confirm, can those of you online here? Okay, I see Mona's image, I can see the most clearly, and her head is knotted.
We can, thank you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, well, let's go, let's see, what is our first item? Public comments. Are there any public comments? There's no public comments in the room. We have been very generous in the way we've managed public comments in our meetings that have been 100% Zoom. Now that we have our first hybrid meeting, we're going to kind of work on how we do this. Normally, we take all public comments at the beginning of an item. And if someone has a public comment, if you would raise your hand to let us know, that would be very helpful. Unfortunately, from the council podium here in the room, we can't see you very well online, so I'm dependent on you shouting out that you wish to make a comment, or on Anthony informing me that you wish to make a comment. Okay, I see no public comments. We will move on. The next item on the agenda, which is a council item, is to consider the request from Menlo Atherton Little League to have a tournament in the stadium this, at the end of this season, which will necessitate the use of the field on Sunday, which requires a council decision.
That's correct. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, the contract for Little League season ends on June 30th. But June 19th is a Sunday request for a season tournament for a Sunday game as part of the postseason tournament. Staff's got a number of potential conditions that have been added to the staff report. If the council chooses to authorize the games for that Sunday, that is Father's Day as well. So that's a consideration for the council to think about, that there may be other people in the park using the field. During my one-on-one conversations, there was a potential suggestion to maybe limiting the number of games on that Sunday. But there are representatives on Zoom from Menlo Atherton Little League who are probably happy to answer any questions and may even want to make a small presentation to the council with their request.
Do we have representatives from the Little League on the call?
On the Zoom call, yes.
Okay.
We do, yeah. This is Shane Gouda, I'm the Vice President of the Menlo Atherton Little League. And we also have Matt Zanamorowski, who is registrar for the league as well.
Okay, great.
Did either of you have a presentation you wanted to make with the request?
Well, I'll say a few words of that, obviously chime in if you feel like it. The request is to limit, every year, so the Menlo Atherton Little League is part of the District 52 Regional Division of Little League National. And that's sort of the northern peninsula part of the region. Includes, you know, a number of cities and districts, Burlingame, Hillsborough, San Mateo, St. Carlos, Redwood City, and the like. Each and every year, there are postseason tournaments. These are All-Star tournaments. There are five distinct separate tournaments that are held by the teams within the District 52. Not to belabor the point, we are only asking for permission to host games for one of those tournaments. This would be the Super Bowl Miners Tournament, and that tournament, as opposed to three of the other ones, which are weeks-long tournaments, this is only a four-day-long tournament, single-elimination tournament involving eight to 12 teams, depending upon the number of teams that can be fielded from the various cities that participate in District 52. So it is a, it is a much more finite universe of teams that would potentially play, and certainly a much more confined universe of days, i.e. just one, that would be seeking permission to the use of Homer Field at Willie Mays Park at Holbrook Palmer for about three to four games. I think that was the nature of the request. And, you know, we would, we received from Mr. Roderick's the outline and parameters for use for the field, and obviously we will comply line, comply line and letter with respect to every one of those. And it's certainly something that is an honor and a privilege for the league to be able to host. We have not hosted a district Little League tournament since 2007 or 2018, when it was the District 12 team. Actually, that's the tournament where the winners get to go on to Williamsport and play in the Little League World Series. This is not, this is not that tournament. This, again, is a much more confined universe, but it is something that, given the length of time and really the honor that it is to represent our own Little League and just the towns of Atherton, I am in the park in this way. I think it's something we're excited about, and we are seeking the council's permission on. So that's all I have to say, Matt. If you want to add any other words, you know, please feel free.
No, it's perfect. Okay, great. Are there any questions from members of the council?
I just want to clarify that this is just at the park, Holbrook Palmer Park, at the baseball field. This would not be in any way use of the carton field.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, I don't see any public comment. Bring it back for comments from members of the council. Bill?
Yeah, I noticed in the write-up that it says that while the the tournament will conclude on either Monday or possibly Tuesday, so that, you know, that indicates there's some flexibility. Because it's Father's Day, you know, starting having the games in the morning, a couple of games, I think, would be appropriate. Going till sunset, I don't think is appropriate. I think that, you know, maybe we should end at three or four. That might limit it to two or three games, but since the plan was Monday or Tuesday to conclude the tournament, I think that that allows us to still be good neighbors, especially since we're using loudspeakers and we're taking up a substantial amount of parking. I think that we want to be good neighbors to the people that live in Felton Gables and around that area, so. So I request that we, we support just two, two games and make sure everything's done by three, possibly three games, but done by, by three o'clock. Sunset is about seven o'clock these days.
Other comments?
Well, I feel completely different because I think this is, you know, kind of a special situation. And I think because it is at the ballpark, there are not a ton of houses immediately adjacent to the park, and I think an exception can be made for this one-time event. And it is a special event, and I think that the ballpark is, is it should be used that way, and I don't think it would be a hardship on our residents for this one-time event to finish out the games. And I don't think it's just limited to just one or two games.
I agree with Elizabeth. I'd like to see us do it, but I also agree with Bill. Going till sunset seems a little unreasonable. I think if you abide by the normal hours that where you terminate play by 4:30, is that, I guess, the question is, is that possible?
If we have three games, I think the answer is yes to that. I mean, typically, we like to have an hour break between each of the games to allow, you know, the dragging of the field and watering of the grass, preparing of the field for each game and just allow a nice orderly shuffle of parking kind of in-between games, so there's not a traffic jam in the parking lot. So we want to make sure that there's a lot of orderly time. So we usually like, you know, and games are about two hours, so if we started, say, the first game at nine, that game ends at 11, have an hour break, have a game from 12 to two, have an hour break, and then go from three until five. That would allow for three games, and I think that's a fairly orderly schedule, and I think that would work for us.
Okay, and could you answer, my understanding was that the proposal was for a tournament that would conclude on Sunday? So I wasn't clear on what the, what is the reference to Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah, so the, so the majority of the games will be played at Burgess Park in, in Menlo Park. That, that is the sort of home field of our majors division, and so we just, given the number of teams and the early, and the way the tournament bracket falls out, we need a supplemental field, and there is no better field in the world to have than Homer Field at Willie Mays Park to be able to all sort of showcase our league and our facilities to, to the greater District 52. So it's just, we just need the excess capacity, and because it's a single-elimination tournament, a lot of teams fall away after that Sunday, so we'll have games on Saturday and then on Sunday, and by the time Monday rolls around, we may only have four teams left at that point with the championship game on, on Tuesday, so.
I see, okay.
At Burgess.
Correct, yes. The Monday, Tuesday, and Saturday games will all be at Burgess, just Sunday games at Holbrook.
Sounds reasonable.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve this and to allow for there to be three games.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion?
Let's see, so all in, we're all here. We don't have to do a roll call. What do you know? All in favor? Genanously approved.
Great. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you so much. We are, we are delighted, and obviously, thank you so much for your support.
Thanks very much.
We're glad that you're using the field and caring for the field as well as you are.
Yes.
It is, it is a gem of the, it is the gem of the city, so we're, we take, we take care of it with pride.
Right. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is to authorize a comment letter to be sent to the High-Speed Rail Authority, the draft of which is presented in item number.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The High-Speed Rail Authority released its 2022 draft business plan for public comment, and the rail committee and town staff have drafted that attached letter to the staff report and prepared that jointly, and it's recommended that the council authorize the mayor to sign the letter and send it off. Right, Robert's here to answer any specific questions with respect to the letter.
Any questions related to this matter? Saying none, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, I don't see any public comment. Let's bring it back for comments from the council.
Good letter.
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple comments. I think that there's a typo that just should be taken a look at on page six of seven under capital costs. It says, "The plan include," I think you want includes and needs an S. And then a question that I had just in the summary, last paragraph. Well, you know, we urge development of a full funding and implementation plan that is more realistic. And I go, well, the question pops into my mind, and, and then what? I mean, I, I'd like to say that we recommend that they terminate the high-speed rail at Doradon Station in San Jose and not even try to go through the peninsula to San Francisco because it's unrealistic and it'll never reach the speeds. I mean, it just seems that we should take this opportunity to be as strong as we possibly can in our opposition for coming up the peninsula.
I would ask why, why we did even suggest that they just fix their plan and keep building.
Yeah, I don't.
Robert, was there comments from the rail committee on that paragraph?
Well, I agree with Elizabeth. I like to see language in that last paragraph that says something to the effect of, this is, we all know this is a bunch of malarkey, so just terminate it wherever is practical, and it's certainly not on the peninsula.
We can certainly wordsmith something like that if that's the consensus of the council before the mayor signs it.
I thought that's what we, that was our position all along.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, the, the letter, all of the ins and outs and rationales and everything is okay. It's just that, in summary, I mean, we just kind of punted at the last minute, and we don't come out, you know, with any kind of strength at all in our conviction, and I personally, I don't think anybody feels that they're going to reach the speeds that they need up the peninsula. Absolutely no way. And what high-speed rail is doing in the Millbrae area and taking over land that they were trying, have earmarked for housing, it's a mess. And then all the other great separations and all that other malarkey. I mean, I think that I'm catching on to your malarkey, you know, it's a little contagious.
That's a technical term.
But anyway, so it just seems that it'd be better for everybody if they just came to their senses and said, you know, we're not, we're not gonna do what Prop 9 said we were going to do anyway, in any event, so we're not just gonna go all the way to San Francisco, and we've got our bullet train, we've got our other, you know, trains that come up. I don't know.
I, I think the intent of the letter was to comment on their draft business plan, but where, where I hear the council going is, we want that conclusive paragraph at the end to match up with our rail policy with respect to high-speed rail.
Absolutely.
I'll give a comment. I agree with that. I think, I think the summary should make that change and, and reflect the rail policy. I, I think that in the, the first two pages of the letter, which are commenting on the specific sections, the language could be strong.
Absolutely.
For example, in the San Jose to San Francisco section, rather than trying to address what the speeds will be and, and to accommodate the, the strategy of actually building the high-speed rail on the peninsula, I think we should say that we think it makes no sense to build it on the peninsula. And, and we can put that, use some of this language, but I'd make it stronger. I, I have a number of comments in the section, all of which are designed to make it stronger, and I could go through the specifics, but I'm not sure it's necessary.
So maybe what we could do is give, you know, agree to let you work with city manager or Robert Abadi to wordsmith it and make it stronger for us.
Exactly.
Okay.
You got your tough, got your tough pants on?
So I, I'd like to move that we approve the letter. I'd like to move that we approve the letter, given the fact that the mayor will work with the city manager and the Public Works Director to strengthen and, and make some minor modifications to the text that's there, but also add that extra paragraph at the end.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously approved. Now, we're moving on to the joint meeting item, which is the general fund and operations budget for the fiscal 2223 year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm going to steal a lot of Robert's thunder. He does have a PowerPoint presentation. You do have hard copies in front of you, and there's some at the back for those that want to have a hard copy of it. But you, you may not want to get to it after, after my presentation. There's a, there were a number of questions during some of our one-on-ones about revenues and expenditure expectations. Some were minor, and I was able to address them during our meetings. Others were more of a general interest, so I'm going to go through some of those clarifying ones. The total general fund revenues are projected at the 19.4 million for fiscal year 2223. Expenditures are projected at 17.8. That gives us a revenue surplus of about 1.64, which will begin to address as we look at that financial planning model down the road. The fiscal year 2223 budget is just over 1.17 million more than the prior year budget for a variety of reasons. As we examine that operations budget, it's important to note that this year's budget does reflect a confluence of events and activities. We're on the finish line of a multimillion-dollar town center project, and it's only now just starting to come online in phases. We're transitioning into these new facilities as we are tonight, but service delivery models, costs, and needs are still being evaluated and realized. We are also transitioning from pandemic to endemic, and that's not only impacted how the town operates, but also, as you know, it's impacted our current and future revenue projections. Lastly, there is a refocus of our capital infrastructure spending from the town center, which has pretty much been our internal focus for the last few years, to external projects, back to the park, streets, drainage, roads, et cetera. So there were some other key items in the staff report. ARPA funds, the town's going to receive, will receive about 1.7 million. We've received half of that so far already. We'll get the remainder in June. There are some expenditures that are specifically recommended for use by ARPA funds in this next year's budget. These are the COVID-related delay related to the town center project. These will be finalized in the current fiscal year and are not a part of the 202223 budget. Technology items in the fiscal year 2223 budget, which will identify separately, and then capital costs to be identified as part of the CIP presentation at a future meeting. Significant changes in the 2223 budget come in two primary categories: one-time expenditures and recurring expenditures. The largest of those expenditures are related to the general plan housing element, which are required to go through. We've got some significant increases in utility costs, given that these buildings are larger and take more to maintain and power. And then the APOA cost related to the negotiated MOU reflects the CPI of 4%. The largest of those expenditures is the housing element update that we're going through now. So the significant one-time expenditures are broken down as follows. The housing element, about 300K. The costs related to park enhancements that are really discretionary projects as part of our proposed new landscape firm. Public Works Director and staff will have the ability to focus their attention in particular areas as they complete their work. That's about 60K. Costs related to a cost allocation study to address town fees and overhead with these new buildings, there's new overhead, so we're going to update our fees to reflect that. That's about 40K. Costs related to system upgrades for phones and servers, this is one of those ARPA recommended funding recommendations, about 55K. Costs related to PD technology upgrades and some software, that's ARPA as well, about 18K. Costs related to an additional speed and data trailer, that's about 26K, also an ARPA funding recommendation. Those are all one-time expenditures. About 100K of that is ARPA funding. Some of the significant recurring expenditure costs are costs related to the new TASER-integrated systems from Axon, that's about 97K. We'll use, and we're recommending that we use ARPA funding for about the first two years of that. And then costs related to negotiated salary adjustments, that's the APOA MOU I mentioned earlier. That's about 182K. Costs related to the new landscape firm contract, that's about 30K difference from the prior contract. Costs related to necessary facility system agreements and maintenance contracts. We've got a lot of new tech in these buildings, and we're going to require some technology firms to assist us in maintaining it. We've got an elevator, we never used to have an elevator, we need an elevator contract. The additional buildings also require additional custodial services, so for the new buildings, that's about 83K, just, that's just the town side. The library's a separate budget. Costs related to the new facilities manager, that's about 75K. Right now, we have Interwest providing that service for us. That contract expires sometime in October, November. When that's done, we need to figure out what we're going to do next, whether that's going to be an in-house or contract staff. We have costs related to the UAL unfunded actuarial liability for non-sworn, that's going up about 52K. And costs related to an increase in utilities for new facilities, as I mentioned before, that's about 111K, that's just the town side. And really, that is, there, there are some unknowns in those numbers, as I mentioned, utilities, the facilities managers, those contracts. And that's because these buildings are coming online in phases. We're in this new building now, we've only been in here a couple of months, but the contractor is still connected to our utilities because they're still doing work in and around this area of the site, so we're not fully on our own. The library's not online yet, the landscaping's not online yet, so there's still some, some unknown costs out there. There's a lot of these, like I mentioned, the elevator, that have warranty agreements and maintenance agreements that are about a year after we accept them, so once that expires, we've got to get our own in place. And then the custodial services and other campus-related services such as landscaping, et cetera, are split between the town and the library, so our costs are about 70% of that. It's about a 70/30 split. What I told Steve Tyler, one of the Interwest folks, is if you walk past that flagpole that's sitting right outside this office or this, this room, it's a library cost. Anything you do beyond that flag goes to the library budget. If it's on this side, it's on the town budget. Let's see, so we talked about utility costs, talked about ERAF a little bit. ERAF is estimated at 1.6 million this coming year. That's my recollection, recollection from our, from our financial planning study meetings that we've had. And so we're projecting it out at 1.6 million. The council can choose to increase that if you so desire. It, it could be more. We just don't know, and there's still a lot of flux in that number, so just give us direction if you want to plug it in at 1.7 versus 1.6. Operational reserves, they're shown at 20% in your, in your staff report. However, there was also some discussion of reducing that number down to 15. So if that's something you want to do, provide that direction this evening as well. And then there's a revenue item in there for alarm permit revenue that's shown at 16,000, but at $100 annual renewal per license. Chief, how many licenses do we monitor? Close to 1,000 that we monitor, and then, but every permit is actually required to get a license, so that number should, should be higher. So we're going to reevaluate that and, and look at where we are. That concludes my part of the presentation. As I said, Robert's got a PowerPoint he can go through if you like, or you, we can just open it up to Q and A. And as a reminder, you've got a forum with the Finance Committee here tonight as well.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't think I've asked, is there any questions from members of the council? Don't see any questions. Is there any public comment on this budget? No, no public comment, okay? Comments from members of the council or from members of the Audit and Finance Committee?
Anne, raise your hand.
Anne? Okay, great. Go ahead, Anne.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure, I, I tend to focus on, on numbers and percentages and things like that, and it was really helpful to get the overview that, that George gave us in writing and today orally, so thank you for that. I just want to make sure I understand, in terms of some of the really big changes in departmental expenses, I want to make sure I understand what's, what's driving those. So there, there were three departments that had much higher, that had clearly had the three highest increases in expenses from this year's adjusted budget to the proposed budget for next year. And in the order of magnitude of just the pure dollar increase, the police department is at the top of that list. I'm not really terribly concerned about that because the percentage increase is only 3.8%, which I think is perfectly reasonable. So I think my only specific questions about the increase in the police department budget is, will it include money for hiring more staff? Because it was noted in the text that it's been, the police department has been understaffed for a number of years.
I could answer that one, Committee Member Walker. They're, they're not understaffed. They are just filling their current assigned and available positions, so as they go through that process and they hire staff to fill vacancies, there is money in the budget to do that.
Well, okay, I misunderstood the text then because I thought it clearly said that they had been below their ideal staffing levels for some time.
It, it, yeah, let me comment on it. It did. I think Anne is right about that. I, I had the same question. It, it said that we hadn't been fully staffed since the fall of 2015. Now, I think that when we budget, we budget for a fully-staffed department, correct?
Correct.
And what that means is that if we aren't fully-staffed during the year, we probably have some more overtime than we had anticipated, but we have more salary that we hadn't anticipated spending that we haven't spent because we haven't had the staff to spend it on. Isn't that correct?
That's correct as well. That's correct as well.
Okay, so, so there's, there's often a carryover of unused funds from one year to the next year, or, or just goes back into the budget.
It goes, it goes back into your unallocated general fund balance and it's
Goes back into the
But what we're talking about though, isn't that the police are understaffed. It's that they have a complement of 30 personnel. And of those 30 personnel, they may have at any one given time, somebody out on workers' compensation leave, where they may have somebody that resigns or somebody that retires. And so they, they're constantly in the recruit mode to fill those ad hoc vacancies as they come up.
Okay, thank you.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Because I thought a couple of years ago, we gave, we authorized the police department to for additional staff person in the budget to budget for, to hire ahead. And so that's what we're doing.
No, you, you authorized them to put somebody in the academy to fill up potential future vacancy. So that's an extra body that we had that we're paying for.
Right, okay.
But it wasn't an ongoing thing. It was just for that timeframe because
We're not doing that all the time?
No, it was related to one particular, otherwise we could have a lot of people that we sponsor through the academy end up paying a salary for. They don't make it for one reason or another. So it was, it was a
We didn't need, we don't need to do that on an ongoing basis then.
Well, the chief will mention when he wants to do something like that and I'll bring that up, but well.
Tell me when I'm back on because I can't hear very well what's going on.
Close to the mic there.
I had the problems.
You did.
He's hard to hear, Anne.
This, the timing of that event, we were taking advantage of the situation at the time and it was advantageous to get the approval for the hire, had to put them in the academy anticipating the vacancy to be filled. And he was actually sworn in a few months ago, so that came
Okay, so that worked.
Worked very well.
Okay.
Are you fully staffed right now?
I have one more position to go and that person is in background and we're hoping to make a decision on that this week or next week. That will put us at full staffing.
Chief, how long does it take to actually, when you find somebody to fill a position to actually putting them on?
Well, this person's a lateral, so that is abbreviated, but in normal, it takes six months in the academy. It's three months to hire, then there's training. It gets close to two years. I mean, it's a lengthy process.
And then during that, and what we're really talking about is during that period of time, somebody else is going to leave, somebody else is going to retire. So it's this constant cycle. Not for the lobster dinner, but in terms of full staff, yes.
So Anne, did you finish your comment?
Um, well, that was part one of three departments I wanted to ask questions about. I just want to make sure we finish with the police before I move on.
Well, let, let me just say, I want to follow up to what Elizabeth raised, which is in the event that we come up to this situation, I, I also was under the impression that that was an ongoing thing. But, but I think it's fine that it's not. I just want to encourage the department that in the event that you face that situation where it, we, you would want the approval to do that again, please bring it to us because that was something that we embraced. And I think we would embrace again.
Yeah, I would appreciate that support.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anne, you can go on to your second point.
Oh, okay, thanks. And actually, I did a real minor thing about the increase in the, in the police department in the budget for next year. And this comes up a couple of different places, but I noticed it here. Of the two biggest increases in line items, under general operations, the biggest thing was an increase in electricity. And I'm scratching my head and saying, gosh, here we built this brand new building. I would think it would be more energy efficient and eco-friendly than what we used to work out of. So can somebody explain to me why in here and also in the planning department, there's big jump up in electricity?
Sure. So these buildings, compared budget year to budget year, these buildings are technically about three times the size that we used to have. So we're, we're going to see an increase in utility costs regardless, just from the basis of size and operation. The PD is the largest square footage resource that we have on this facility besides the library, once the library comes onboard. So they get the lion's share of the costs that are attributed to the town side of the utility cost increase.
That makes perfect sense.
But, but the, the other piece, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the other piece is that the electricity numbers are an estimate here. Yes. We don't really know how much power these new facilities are going to consume. And this is a budget for the next entire year beginning July 1st. So it's, it's entirely an estimate.
It, it is. And, and, and to go a little further on the mayor's comment, we are working with PG&E and Peninsula Clean Energy to address whether we're actually on the correct rate schedule for these buildings. And we're also, as you may be aware, looking at a solar PPA agreement that may offset some of those energy costs as well. We don't know quite what that is going to, what that offset's going to be. And we haven't yet even approved that PPA. But once all of those things come in, come online, which are expected to be within the next fiscal year, we'll true up the electricity costs.
Got it. Thank you very much, George. Um, the, the second highest increase in dollar amount of departments was for pub, Department of Public Works. And that was a 12.3% increase. And I'm gathering from what I've read that, that the primary reasons for that are a facilities manager, a new maintenance contract, and expanded custodial services and building system costs. Now, so I, I think it's the, the new maintenance contract, is that an external maintenance contract? Or I, I wasn't quite clear because it said DP contract, DPW maintenance.
That is landscape services related to the park in the town center.
Ah, okay. Well, that makes perfect sense. Got it. Thank you. And then the, the third, third largest increase in dollar amount was in the planning department. And this, I think, I mean, this one really has gone through the roof. It's more than doubled for next year. And it is gone up by 101.5%. And I gather from looking at the numbers and hearing what you've said, that the, probably the biggest element of this is funny, I use that term, but is the housing element. Can you let, let me understand a little bit better exactly what that entails and who's making that, who's using that money? And how often we have to, to spend it?
Housing element has to be updated every eight years. So we don't go through this every year, thankfully. We will go through some general plan amendments over, over the course of time, but the housing element is every eight years. And it does require a number of consultants and that's where the bulk of this money is going to go to is environmental review, design aesthetic review for architectural review, land use analysis and a number of other things related to updating that housing element in order to address the state mandated housing numbers that the state, that the town has to reach.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Let me just add on the last item in my conversation with George on this. I, I also asked about that and I asked specifically how much this increase, which is about $300,000, compared to the costs the last time we did this, taken into account inflation, but whether it was essentially the same. And he said that it was.
Yes.
I, I would also add, I found out when I was researching this, doing my little five cents worth on this housing element thing. I had a question for the planner. And George said, fine, she'll call me first before she'll speak to you. The point is, there's a gatekeeper in place, so we, we don't squander these consulting hours because they are consulting hours and they're probably not cheap. I didn't ask how much, but so I, I think, I think the, the money will be wisely spent. All 300,000 and hopefully no more than that.
Other comments from members of the council or members of the finance committee?
On, on the whole thing or?
Uh, yeah.
Well, I'd, I'd like to have the council discuss the, uh, changing the, the reserve policy that we had discussed when we had the spreadsheet up a couple of months ago. When we were trying to, you know, peg the money and make the decision to do the $5 million UAL contribution. I, I know that there was a discussion with regards to reducing the reserve by 5%. And, and the city manager was, was comfortable as long as we kept some numbers as we had had in that spreadsheet. But apparently we have not come to, you know, a full council decision on that. So I would like to raise that so that we can at least get into that.
Can I ask a question of why we would want to do that?
Sure. So with the financial planning model spreadsheet, we had set aside the 15% emergency reserve, 20% operational reserve. And staff was also recommending that we have an allowance beyond that because I don't have the ability to touch either of those reserves for, you know, one time costs or expenditures in an operational side without coming to the city council.
I like that.
So, so Robert and I, as we're looking at that financial model, we still need a buffer in the general fund just in case we spin it down so far that we can't make payroll or something like that. I'd still have to come to the city council to get approval to spend the reserve. And there's a time issue there.
I would like to know.
So the recommendation was if you reduce the operational reserve to 15% as opposed to 20, that 5% then carries forward and gives us the buffer we need down below. And it frees up some money for the council to use as unallocated general fund for capital projects.
So can I respond?
Of course.
I don't know, from where I'm sitting, I would prefer to know when we're really getting low and not just give you an extra 5% to, you know, have without letting us know that we're getting low. And I think that we can, you know, call special meetings very quickly, you know, and get approval. So there's not, you know, time crunches or something. I don't know, that just makes me, I, that rationale just doesn't make me, it, it doesn't convince me that that's the reason. Because I was here in the sea when we established those reserve policies. And I think that they're, they're there for a reason. And I don't see a compelling reason to reduce them.
Let me, I, I'd like to address that.
Yes.
I, I agree. I'd rather not have an additional 5% reserve. But the way that I think it makes the most sense to do this, and I've walked through this in a great amount of detail and some challenge in my conversation with George. And George has convinced me that the, there, there needs to be a, about 5%, not 10%. But there needs to be about 5% for them to manage on a budget basis because of when funds come in and when funds go out. And they need that in excess of whatever our reserves are. So that, because they're writing checks on a balance and they don't want to have to come to the council to get approval to write a check because that balance could go to zero depending on what the need is. So there, there needs to be a buffer there. And I would prefer to have that be the 5% and not to increase it beyond where we are. So it makes the most, so it makes the most sense to me to change the operational reserve, which is a discretionary reserve and is high when you compare it to other cities, to make that 15% rather than 10%. And in fact, then there's still 35% of buffer there, including our allocated reserves.
How does that work?
So essentially what the council's doing is giving me the authority to spend 5% of our 20% operational reserve.
On to, because you're going to transfer it down to the operational reserve instead of the 15%? You're going to make that 20 and reduce one to 15?
You're going to keep the 15% mandatory reserve, emergency reserve. And you're going to set the operational reserve at 15% instead of 20. Basically, you're freeing up 5% for us to use as the float in our checking account.
But it, it doesn't go down to zero without the expectation that it's going to come back up. It's a float. So they're able to go in and utilize those funds.
Well, I don't recall in the 10 or 12 years I've been on the finance committee that we've ever come busted through any of these reserves. We've never used them. So, so they can't be set too low. So they can only be set correctly or too high.
That's right.
So if you want to low, go from 15 on the, on the operational reserve, which has suddenly been renamed the budget stabilization reserve, just to make it hard to say. With the intention that George has 5% more leeway, I don't have a problem with that. I would definitely have a problem raising them.
I don't think we're recommending raising.
The recommendation is to reduce it, to reduce the budget stability.
I understand, but before I thought he was asking for another 5% number in there somewhere, which
Perhaps I can make another suggestion to address Councilmember Lewis's concern. Leave it at 20, but we can develop a policy that says staff has the authority to expand 5% of it.
Without coming to council?
Without coming to the city council.
Well.
Well.
Other, other than in the, in the town center project, one of you even come close.
That's what I'm saying.
The, the issue was when we're looking at that financial planning model and we're allocating all this money to capital projects. We get nervous because the balance in our general fund that you're allocating out on these projects drops considerably. And in some years it gets to a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's just not enough.
In the out years conceivably.
Yeah.
But the budget services will take care of it. I'm not worried about it.
Yeah. And when we looked at it, when we had that spreadsheet, there was money below what we were allocating out. In addition to the reserves, there was money at the bottom and you said, yeah, we don't want it to go below 1.7 because Robert gets upset. So we would end up taking the 5% and that kind of frees some money up. So we don't want Robert to be upset or nervous.
No.
You know? And but, so the support is still there. It's just that some of that money is available.
Correct, correct. And that's, that's what, that's what happens when you're reducing it to the 15 versus the 20.
I don't know.
So I, I think it's important that we do this. And I don't have a, I, I don't have a strong opinion about whether we change the operational reserve to 15% and say that they can use this 5% or we leave it at 20% and just say that they can go into the bottom 5% of it.
I like that better.
It doesn't matter to me. What, in both cases, it frees up anything below the 35%, which is what I want.
But won't you, don't you want to know if he's going to be using that additional 5%? Just because you, you gotta let us know.
No, it's frozen, so to speak.
Right, right, right. But that 5%, you know, when he's going to use that 5%?
Yeah, that's fine.
Would know. So you're going to keep it at 20 and 15, but you have the authority for using 5% only in dire emergencies when Roberto is nervous.
They, they can use it to meet payroll. It's not a dire emergency.
He may be, whatever that need is, I will advise the council as we
Yeah, you can advise us, but you don't require our approval to use that 5%. You would require our approval to use the next 15 or any portion of the next 15%.
However, if you put the spreadsheet back up where we can see it.
I, I don't have that.
Okay, that spreadsheet had a number and I believe you didn't want it to go below 1.7 million. Is that about the right number?
It was a calculation. It was 5, 5% of our operation.
Yeah, okay. And so there, plus there was 35% up there that was being held in reserve. So actually we're saying you can spend, put some money down there, but there might be some money free that could be used elsewhere.
I, I understand what you're saying. You're, you're, you're trying to free up that 5% for use by the council for capital projects.
We are freeing it up.
Yeah.
Because we're allowing you to go in to the, to 5% of what had been the operational reserve.
Yeah. So, so then what, what we're, what we're flipping is we're saying 15% mandatory reserve, 15% operational reserve. The 5% is the number at the bottom of that spreadsheet that staff can now use.
Yeah.
Right?
For payroll or whatever you need.
Right. And that's what we were, yeah. And I thought was, that was the, at least the conversation when we had discussed it.
But that's not exactly what council member But that's not exactly what Councilmember Lewis is articulating.
You know, you guys are gonna overrule me on this. I just, I just, you know, it just seems like it hasn't, we haven't needed it in the past. I mean, all these years, how many, it's been like, you know, ten, twelve years and we haven't really needed it. And so all of a sudden now we need it. And I think that our financial picture looks pretty good going forward. So I anyway.
That's six point two percent.
It's been ten years.
Been ten years.
We we did need it at one point. In fact, we were challenged before that ten-year period.
Well, that's why we initiated this because that tenure at that point, we needed it.
We we can write it up as the policy. It'll come as part of the budget adoption. And then and we'll look at it again at mid-year, see where we're at, see where the funding's going, see what capital projects as we work through the financial planning model.
Yeah.
We end up.
I think. Are so are we at fifteen and fifteen?
I I think we're at fifteen and fifteen and there's another five that you can utilize and you are going to inform us whenever you go into that five percent for use.
Okay.
We don't want you to be nervous, Robert. I really want to be hearing your presentation.
Okay. Any other comments on the budget matters? Yes, Tom.
We can't hear Tom.
He's so tall.
I hadn't turned the microphone on. To the extent feasible, we want to pay down the unfunded pension liability. We've allocated five million dollars that will be paid, I understand, this fiscal year. And that's reflected in this budget. But I'm wondering if there isn't another source of funds that could be used. And specifically, there's a a separate fund from the general fund called the internal service funds. That fund at the end of fiscal twenty-one had a balance, cash balance, and it had four million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And uh, that balance has been increasing over the past seven years at a rate of eleven percent a year. It's more than doubled in the last seven years. And I'm wondering, is there a specific anticipated near-term use for that cash? And if not, uh, should we budget to transfer a substantial part of that into the general fund? Where it could be used in any number of ways, but paying down the unfunded pension liability to a greater extent.
So a a large percentage of that fund uh, is for compensated abstances and other things that were required to keep funds available for for our audit. So it goes through the, is that part of that fund as well? And then there's a liability insurance amount in there that our insurer says we're self-insured. So we have to have a retention of amount in our budget for a number of claims. So that has to stay in the fund. There are maybe some things in there that could be used, but it's not in the
It has a net balance of three million eight or something like that.
Right.
Uh, and as I said, it seven years ago was less than half what it is now. Every year it's gone up.
Yeah.
And by just focusing on the general fund, it seems to me we're ignoring other sources of cash that could be used.
Some of them are required to be retained.
Are they required to be retained in a separate fund?
Yeah, like workers' comp and other uh, fund amounts because we're self-insured, we're self-insured. So uh, we have to keep that set aside in a separate fund for those cases where there's a trip and fall in the community or employee gets hurt and we have to pay a certain amount of that.
I think there's something like a million six in that's shown for workers' comp, right? But there's four million six in cash in fund.
Right, and there's the general liability side of things as well. That's just the workers' comp side.
Okay.
But we happy to sit down and go through those things.
Well, how does it, how does the the uh, absences that you gotta, you know, you gotta allow for vacation pay and sick time?
Correct.
How how does that relate? I haven't looked at it closely.
That's 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 in that fund as well.
Well, I understand it's in there, but I mean.
How much of it is?
How much of it is is a real number?
Compensated abstances?
So.
Yeah.
Point is, his point may be accurate. We we've got a slush fund there.
It makes Robert sleep good at night.
The general liability fund, uh, the uh, employee benefits fund.
Why don't we ask Robert? We don't want to get him nervous. Why don't we ask, why don't we ask that staff review that and come back with a report on, you know, what's there? I think that that would be a a good exercise and would say, or at least bring it back to the finance committee for a recommendation on if they decide that they need to make one. Since that's where the request came from, I think is a reasonable request.
So some of that also is the OPEB ARC funds that we contribute to here to the other post-employment benefits, our premiums to A-BAG and Alliance, uh, the liability insurance requirements.
Well, I I think it's appropriate if you could just do a comprehensive breakdown on it and bring it back to the audit committee and look and see if there's any funds that are available in there.
We can do that.
I think that that's the suggestion.
And just one other general comment. When you, when you just focus on the general fund, I don't think you see the whole picture. If you focused on the net position, which are the first couple of statements in your financial statements, you you realize that the five million dollars that we're going to pay to pay down pension liabilities, it's not going to affect our net position. It's just paying off a liability. The effect on our overall net position is gonna be zero. And so to the extent we have excess cash, it seems as though we ought to to be sure we're we're considering any source of cash we have.
Well, I think if we have excess cash, we should pay off our our loans, our debts.
What's what's excess at this instant with our financial planning model? Ain't gonna be excess uh, three years from now, for example, so it rolls forward. So we just need to be a little prudent, but your your point is well taken. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any any other comments?
No.
I don't see any comments. I don't think there's any action item at this time.
No, it's just a review of the operation side. Your, the budget calendar has the next meeting on the budget when. Okay. I think he can go through that if you would like.
I'll just study that. I have any questions, I'll call and get permission to talk to Robert.
You're bedtime reading? It's beautifully done. Robert, honestly, thank you so much.
Will you be upset?
Well, he's dying. He's chomping. Look at these beautiful charts.
We don't want to upset Robert.
Oh, we'll forgive you then, I think.
Okay. All right, I'm taking this home and framing it.
Motion to adjourn is appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a comment first.
Go ahead.
I've wanted to uh, give my commendation or thanks and a shout out to commander. You did a fabulous job today with the with your troops and going through, uh, patting everybody on the back. Chief did too, but we, I couldn't hear him, but you did a great job and I I thought it was worth. Thought it was worthy of merit. So thanks very much.
And I'm sorry.
Great idea. I'm I was amazed at how young our police department is though. Yeah, unbelievable. Yeah.
Awesome. Sorry I missed it. I apologize.
On your first meeting here, your first hybrid meeting in your new council chamber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a meeting yesterday.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.
Get your gavel.
Everybody log off.
For fun.
Thank you.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye. Hi, Mona.